Now the meeting is called to order. Good evening. Our September 26th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. As a reminder, tonight, Councilwoman Derek Connolly and Councilwoman Michelle Gamboa are out of town, but state law does allow them to participate in the meeting virtually, and we are glad they are able to participate with us tonight. I'm waving at you, but they can't see us. Our prayer and pledge today will be led by representatives of the Martin House, the Children's Advocacy Center. Their mission is to raise awareness and ensure that every child impacted by abuse is heard, protected, and receives vital services for their continued safety and future well-being. Roxanne, we're glad to have you and Rainey with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, if you guys would please rise. Oh, Rainey did too.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we bow our heads in grateful hearts to thank you for your love and many blessings. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy in our country, the opportunities we have to fulfill our callings, and the abilities we each have to improve our communities. We ask you, oh Lord, for your blessing over our mayor, city members, city council members, city manager and staff, and community leaders as we thank them for their hard work and sacrifice. Give them wisdom and discerning hearts to govern our city fairly, solve problems skillfully, and work together in harmony to benefit everyone who lives and works in our wonderful city. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have a presentation of a proclamation recognizing October 5th, 2024 as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day. If Ms. Shannon and everybody wants to come up and join me up here. Thank you, guys, for being here. Whereas the Alzheimer's Association has requested that the mayor, by proclamation, recognize October 5th, 2024 as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day in the city of Longview. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a devastating neurological condition that affects millions of individuals and families across the nation, causing profound emotional and financial burdens, the Walk to End Alzheimer's event is a significant initiative organized by the Alzheimer's Association to raise funds for research, provide care and support for affected individuals and their families, and ultimately work towards the eradication of Alzheimer's disease. Whereas the city of Longview recognizes the importance of acknowledging and supporting events that contribute to the betterment of our community and the well-being of its residents. And now, therefore, I, as mayor of the city of Longview, do hereby proclaim October 5th, 2024 as Walk to End Alzheimer's Day in Longview. Congratulations, guys. Would you like to say a little something?
We're so grateful you did this. Thank you. Just anything to bring awareness to our walk. Our walk is October the 5th at Teague Park. Opening ceremony starts at 9:30. We'd love to have you register and come walk with a team or just come hang out with us. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, guys, so much. We'll take pictures. Okay. Next up is Presentation Item B, Presentation of Development Services Customer Interaction Tools and Tracking Upgrades with Mr. Michael Shirley. Go ahead, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, city manager, thank you for the opportunity to showcase several projects that Development Services has been working on in order to improve customer service. The focus of these efforts has been on efficiencies and project management, review turnaround times, and consistency and predictability. City Works is a GIS-centric work management tool that allows all aspects of the permitting process to be integrated. It gives staff the power to use GIS to improve staff collaboration and visualize data. It also allows us to configure templates, inboxes, and dashboards to help predict daily tasks. City Works also allows staff to manage progress through the use of milestones and allows project data to be available at the click of a button. City Works is also configured to send an email to the applicant as the project moves through each milestone. One of the big things that we've implemented over the last year and a half is our City Works online permit portal, sorry. This is an exciting tool that is a gateway that allows applicants and contractors to apply for and track progress of permits and licenses online. Once a permit or license has been created, the user can request inspections, check the status of applications, and pay for permit fees online. The portal allows you to track all permits that you've applied for and see them graphically on a map. You can see those that are submitted, those that are incomplete, and it keeps track of all permit history from the creation. So, once a permit's applied for, they'll be able to see that historical data in there. Revisions can be uploaded and applicants can request inspections through the portal. The process for applying online is simple as selecting the permit type and answering questions. As you can see on this slide, these are the different permit tabs, and they'll just go through and select whether it be a plumbing or a building permit. And then, through that user-friendly interface, they answer some questions through our data groups that are basically the online permit application, fill in the blanks, and then it'll go through the process. Contractors have access to the same real-time data as staff does. This is a very similar interface to what we see on our desktop version. And it allows them to track the progress of the application through the actual different milestones and see that real-time with those comments. And then, at the end of the progress, it'll send an email as well. We have received very positive feedback through this process. It's been online. We started about two years ago when we first implemented it. We started with our simple permits, like our trade permits, kind of cash-and-carry permits. And then, we've slowly, through our permit refresh process, have been able to adapt other permits because that was a process that we had to go through, adapting our permits and doing a refresh. But very positive feedback. However, can't please everyone. There's always going to be that one or two people that have something negative to say. We did receive a zero out of five stars from at least one user since we're not using nearly enough paper. A little comedic relief there for y'all. There are those, and I won't name them, that still want to use paper. As part of that process, we also did implement DigiPlan, which is a digital plan review software. It enables the plan review process to work within City Works, creating a seamless link into our portal and document management. It allows comments to be embedded in the plans and creates a clean and concise report for corrections required. Yet again, there's always that one person that likes to leave zero out of five stars because we make plan review far too clear. The other thing that I would like to talk about, and this is something that's going to be real user-friendly for our citizens. This is our permit dashboard, and then I'll talk about our permit map as well. The dashboard was created to provide a customer-focused tool that can show our workload along with analytics on our permit review turnarounds. And so, there on the left, you can see the volume of permits submitted by permit type. You can go in there, and there are some things in there that you can change to kind of trigger in different permit types. You can trigger by timeframes. This particular slide is filtered in the permits applied for in the last 60 days. You can see that we have a total of 243 permits created with 236 reviews completed. That's important because there are a lot of permits applied for that may have multiple reviews, so that'll actually show the workload that staff has outside of just using permit submissions for that. Also, this has the average days per review, and that shows at that time it was an average of one day per review. Now, that's all of our permits combined, so that we're not always hitting the one-day mark on some of our commercial plan reviews. But if you look at it, 97% of the time, we're hitting our marks. And as far as our permit turnarounds for commercial plans, we have a 10-day turnaround period. Residential plans is a five-day turnaround. There are some of our residential-type permits that are a three-day turnaround. And then, all of our trade-related permits is a one-day turnaround. Those, we do have to do like an application intake, but those are generally a one-day cash-and-carry type permit. And then, on this other tab, the reviews in progress, this is another tool that allows us to see what our workloads are based on the due dates, allows us to track if we're overdue or if we have permits that are due that day so that we can manage based on those due dates rather than when they come in. Previously, we managed that workload just based on when it came in. And now, that will help us kind of fill out those that might be a little quicker review. And there again, you can change the tabs based on timeframe. You can categorize it by permit category or permit type. And the cool thing about this that is staff-user-friendly is there on the left, you can see all the permits that are in progress. We can actually click on that, and it'll take us into City Works to see that review so we don't have to go through and open multiple different software packages to get in there to do that review. Once you're in there, then the DigiPlan is embedded. We click on it, and it takes us to the plans to do the review. It's all integrated. The key with all of that is information. It's all GIS-centric, based on graphical data, but it's very informationally-based as well. And so, that one place in City Works has all of the data, all the applicant data, all the project data. We can actually go in and link permits. So, if a project will have multiple permits for all the MEPs, the building, the site plan, those will all be connected so we're not having to look, you know, do a lot of data searching. It's just helped us been able to really streamline the project management process. The next thing is our permit map. And we've had a lot of web application maps available, but this one is a recent addition. And so, what it does is it allows us, anytime a permit, and this is tied in with City Works, anytime a permit is applied for, it will populate the map within 24 hours. It's not exactly real-time, but it does do it within a day. And so, that way, citizens can go on this map. They can see everything that's applied for in Longview. They can zoom in. They can go to their neighborhood. They can look and see what projects are going on in their neighborhood. They can click on it. They can see address. They can see permit type. They can see what it is, what the square footage is, a basic work description. It's pulling all of that data out of City Works, out of that application. It'll tell the status, whether it's issued or it's in review. And so, this is a good tool. So, if you're having work done, you can see if they've applied for a permit. If they, you know, if they've told you, yeah, we've got permits, you can double-check without having to make a phone call. And that's one of the big keys with all of this is making sure that data is available at fingertips without having to make a phone call or send an email. It's real self-service. And so, they can see. They can also see, you know, we've had HOAs that have inquired that want to keep track of work that's being done that maybe hasn't gone through their process. This is a tool where they can keep track of that and not have to make phone calls down to our office. So, with that being said, of course, there's always Gretchen that has to leave zero out of five stars because there's just too much available information out there. And that's a real quote. And I'll tell you who said that if you ask me. It wasn't Steve this time, I promise. I'm not picking on Steve. And certainly, last but not least, I want to roll out our development and building plan templates. This is something that we've talked about for a long time internally that, wouldn't it be nice to have? I'm not aware of other cities that have done this. In the past, we've had development guides that kind of have a lot of pages about, you know, it's a simplified version of our requirements, but it's still a lengthy document. And so, we said, wouldn't an illustrative, pictorial, graphic work better? Especially something that they could use as a template. And so, what we've done is we've created, or we've had created, four templates, a residential plan set, a commercial site plan, a subdivision plat, and then our subdivision pre-submission proposal created in a template format. And there's a lot of information on there because it's a typical plan set. It has a lot of annotation in it that is not necessarily required, but it's more in like an annotated checklist style so that they can go through and determine whether it applies to them or not. If it does, they can address it. If it doesn't, they can omit it. Also, gives them commentary along with that. There's also certain aspects where we have typical details where they can use whichever detail is applicable for them, such as driveway details or information about lot-to-lot drainage, where we want to know how they're going to grade the lot, but they don't necessarily, you know, they don't have an engineer, so they can take one of our details, drop it in. And we see that a lot in our engineering plan sets, where they'll have a whole plan set that they just use the same format every time, and they'll circle or mark out the typical details that they're not going to use. So, hopefully, they can set, you know, a lot of the builders can set this up. And then, as they go, they can pick and choose and have that template that they use. That way, it provides them the direction as far as what's required. It gives them some references as far as our Unified Development Code, as far as, okay, landscaping table is required. Here's where you need to put it. Here's the items. And here's where to go look for the requirement as well so you can calculate what your needs are. So that it's not just saying, you need landscaping, but then they have to go figure it out. It has those back-and-forth references with our engineering standards and with our Unified Development Code. Also, it just allows for consistency in those plan sets. If we're looking for the same thing in the same place every time, it makes that plan review go a lot quicker for us as well. There's a lot of things, especially now that we're doing digital, where we're doing digital watermarks, digital approval stamps in our system setup. We need that in the same place every time. It's in an effort to make things go quicker and smoother. It will be some adjustments, but there is still flexibility built into it. We're not saying you have to have all of these sheets. If you have this information and combine it into a more concise document, that's fine. There are certain things that need to be in certain locations. But it takes the guesswork out of what we're looking for and what's required. There again, there's always feedback that is not quite flattering. But you know what? No more guessing games. So, here we are. I would like to give a shout-out to our Development Services staff because this has been a two, two-and-a-half-year process that really started when we started looking, you know, post-COVID, when we saw that, you know what? I think we can work remotely and service our clients without them having to come to our front door. And so, with the implementation of our online portal, it really opened our eyes to how our system was set up, and we had to start kind of redoing a lot of our permits and processes. And so, we kind of had to step back and do that. But man, they have put in the work. They've been very excited. It's helped streamline the processes and helped create some efficiencies. We still have lots of work to do to completely, you know, to completely implement it. But also, our information technology staff, because they've been doing a lot of work on the backside. Josh and his team, Dale, Joey, Dr. Rachel, they've all been very, very wonderful to work with and have put us at the front of their workload. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Pertle.
I promise I wasn't talking about you.
Okay. So, you'll receive a PDF off of this, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are these plans available for everybody to look at online?
Yes, they are on our website. We're going to put some snapshots together as far as where those are located and start sending that out to people because we are, tonight's kind of rolling all of that out. It is, and then we are working to get those in other formats that they can be downloaded and used as the templates.
What I'm asking you is if I draw a set of prints up and send them into you, then everybody in the whole city can look at them?
No. The only person that has access to that permit is you. It's based on a granted access. So, if you have, if you have a login to our online permit portal, you're the only one that can see that. Unless, if you have other people that are listed in the people section and have an email. So, say, you know, you have an electrician that applies for a permit, but he wants you to be able to see all of his workflow and milestone. He can add you as the contractor onto that permit as well, and then you can see that as well.
Okay. So, what do you do if they bring in a hard copy?
Then, we'll take it, and we'll scan it, and we'll work through that. Yeah. If it's a large format, we, currently, we have a large-format scanner, but it's going the way of the dinosaur. So, but we'll work through that and make sure that we're not turning people away.
Now, large format, what, what are you talking, D-size?
Yeah. Yeah, 24 by 36.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just want to comment and say, I thank you for the presentation, those of us that don't work in it every day. I'm excited to see that we're making efforts to be customer-service oriented. Of course, we want to be very, very friendly to all of our businesses and welcoming and make it as easy as possible. So, thank you for making the effort to do that. I also think it's incredibly cool that folks could pull up, you know, people see things happening, and they want to know what business is coming there. So, that's a really neat feature to be able to share with citizens, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I do not have any speaker cards. Would anyone like to fill out a card and speak now and fill out a card later? Seeing that, I will move on to the consent agenda. Another reminder that we have council members who are joining us virtually tonight. To accommodate the broadcast and proceedings, we will conduct business with voting by a show of hands. So, please raise your hand to make a motion. If either virtual attendee needs to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized. And you guys, help me pay attention to that, please. If for some reason we lose the connection, we will just mute you and continue the meeting. So, we'll be mindful to not speak over each other and try to take that a little slower so we can be sure and honor their attendance. Thank you, guys, for joining us virtually. So, the consent agenda is first up, and I know there's a couple of items we wanted to talk about. Do you want to go ahead and do that, Ms. Moore?
Yes. I want to do F, M, and N.
Okay. F is mayor and council. I do know that we had an error in the agenda, and so, it is Keith Honey that we're asking. Oh, that's you? I'm sorry.
That's on me.
Okay.
I didn't get that done right, so.
But so, F would be consider a resolution nominating a candidate, which is Keith Honey, to the Gregg County Appraisal District Board of Directors. He's currently serving, and it would be a request to reappoint him. But sorry, that was blank.
Okay. And so, there was nobody else that applied or anything like that?
It is typically done through requesting they serve as opposed to application on that one. So, no, nobody else indicated any interest.
Okay.
And then, what was the other one?
M and N.
M is Mr. Archer, and N is Mr. Archer as well, if you would come forward.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I just want you to go ahead and tell us about the management request and what happened and what were it.
Yeah. What happened? We had an accident on April 25th where three fire units were involved, which was Engine 1, 6, and Medic 2. To repair the two engines, that's $115,713.40. We expect every bit of that to be covered by insurance, but we are going to make that expenditure. That's why we want to make sure and bring that to you. They'll cover everything except for the deductible, which is budgeted in our risk management budget. On N, that is for the medic repair. So, that's going to be $60,813. Same thing, though. We think insurance is going to cover every bit of that except for the deductible, which, again, is covered in the risk management budget. All of the repairs are far enough along. We don't anticipate any more additional cost to get these repairs done. The one thing I'll bring up on the medic is that while it's there being repaired, our intention is to have a bariatric unit installed. So, currently, Medic 11 is the only bariatric unit that FIRE has available to them right now. It's a reserve unit. Two years ago, we ordered two ambulances, and it's been two years. We expect delivery in December. And when that happens, Medic 11 will be retired. So, while this one's down, it's a perfect opportunity to go ahead and get that bariatric unit installed so that they'll have access to it.
And so, on both incidents, did we have to do anything proactively to prevent any of these from happening again?
Well, I know FIRE, they do extensive training. These drivers know exactly, you know, they've been trained. So, driver error led to this. They have also taken the opportunity to say, hey, this happened. Let's take another look at our SOP. And while they're developing that SOP, their intention is to actually include the manufacturer as well and see if they've got anything to add to that. But they've worked really hard to make sure that that's improved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other questions or things you want to get answers to on the consent agenda? Okay. I have a motion from Mr. Wade and a second from Mr. Newstad, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Please indicate with raise of hand. Aye. Thank you. Consent agenda is approved. We will move on to action item, which is to consider a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager and such other city officials to use fiscal year 2324 year-end savings to pay for a temporary cost-of-living adjustment for city employees. Mr. McPhee.
Yes. So, as council discussed and authorized or told me that you wanted me to bring back the use of the projected year-end savings as a one-time cost-of-living payment for those employees currently, we took that number. We went back. We determined that there's a $681.50 amount, gross amount, for each employee that will be written. Obviously, their withholdings and their portion of the TMRS and those things would come from that. So, but that year-end savings is the 716-201 divided by the number of employees gives a 61850 for payment to each employee.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion for Mr. McPhee?
How long will they receive this, ma'am?
We're planning to do that before, since it's got to be out of this fiscal year. We're planning to do that, I believe, not next week, not this week, but on Monday. There you go. I knew it was going to be the following week. I just didn't know when it was going to get processed. Thank you for that.
Good. And I just want to acknowledge and thank council for really pushing for this. I think what you learned from this discussion and push is that council, every member here, values the city employees. We were disappointed to not be able to do a raise this year. And certainly, it is our intention to continue looking at that annually and hope that that will be something we are able to fit into the budget next year. But I just want to thank you, guys, for placing that value on employees. I think that's important. I think that's important, and we certainly want to honor and recognize our city employees who makes the whole thing work. So you guys are awesome. We wish it was a raise, but believe that this is what we are able to do this year and are grateful to be able to do it. So appreciate y'all supporting that and supporting our city employees. We have the best, we have the best anywhere. Okay, and I believe I need a motion for them.
Motion to a close.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Moore and a second from Mr. Pertle. All in favor, please raise your hands. All right, it is approved unanimously. We are going to move on to items of community interest. Mr. Conley, you're first, if you have something.
Yes, ma'am, I have, first, I want to say thank you to Scott and Steve and the city broadcast team for allowing me to be here. I have grandchildren that are participating in athletics on a Thursday night, eighth grader and a ninth graders. It's in Sherman, Texas, so I really appreciate it. I love my family, but I love Longview, too, so thank you for letting me be a part of this. Community interest, tomorrow night, Friday night, come out to Pirate Stadium, the number six team in the state, undefeated Pirate, Pine Tree Pirates, and the number seven Kilgore Bulldogs will be playing, and we would love to have everybody support, have a great time. It's great, not only the football team, but the, everything that happens with that, and our community comes together with the band, the drill team, the cheerleaders, the community of kids, and we do a lot of things that are positive. So if you're looking for something to do tomorrow night, come out and support, support the Longview Pine Tree Pirates. It's a great day to be a Pirate. Thank you, guys, again, for allowing me to be here and still participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Ms. Moore, you're up.
The City of Longview and the Longview Chamber of Commerce are seeking to unite the community by producing a unique matchmaking opportunity at a community volunteer fair on Thursday, November 7th. Booth reservations are accepted through Wednesday, October 9th. You can learn more at longviewtexas.gov/volunteerfair.
Very cool. Anything else?
That'll be it.
Okay, Mr. Wade?
Yes, ma'am. The City of Longview and area economic development corporations will host a college and career expo from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Thursday, October 10th. The expo will be held at Mod Cob Convention Center, 100 Grand Boulevard. Colleges or businesses interested in connecting and sharing information with high school students across the region, or across Region 7 and Region 8, should contact careers@longviewtexas.gov to participate. And that's all I have tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Newstad?
Yes, thank you. So District 4 Town Hall meeting is coming up on Thursday, October 17th at 5:30 at the Invent Center on Alpine. That's where the East Texas Builder Association is. So come out and enjoy and get to see, meet city staff, and get to see all the good stuff that the city's doing and the district, and just glad to share all that stuff with you. So please come for that. Next is Stop, Drop, and Roll with Laughter. So this is Duck Duck Moose is collaborating with the Longview Fire Department on this show to help give you some comedy with some life-saving information. So this is going to be the best life-saving advice I've ever heard, probably, I'm sure. So I'm excited about hearing that. My wife and I already got tickets, so definitely come and join us on Saturday, October 5th at 7:00 PM at Community Connections. It's only $10 per person on that, so come here. Next is the Saturday, October 5th, is the Great Pumpkin Roll. I want to always finish with Charlie Brown, but, so it's a great event, I think, I don't know how many years we've done it now, two or three? Two years, three, third years? Okay. And so we've participated every year, I believe, to it and just enjoyed it. We were judges one year. It's just a fun time. I've always been amazed at how far pumpkins will roll, so if you want to see that and be amazed, come downtown Longview, 3:00 to 6:00 PM on Saturday, October 5th. And then we did the proclamation already for the Walk 10 Alzheimer's, but to reiterate a little bit on it, it is on Saturday, October 5th. The, we're doing the location, it's going to be at Teague Park this time instead of being downtown by the courthouse, so be aware of that, make sure you're going to Teague Park for the event. The opening ceremony is at 9:30, and you can go to act.alz.org to find a team. The City of Longview has one, and so anybody who wants to walk as part of the city, feel free to join by looking for that team there, and we'd love to have you. That's all, thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Gamboa?
Hello, everybody. Thank you again to Scott and Steve and media dev for letting us be there. Thank you all, thank you for allowing me to participate in this way. I love Longview, and thank you for allowing me to see my friend off to her. It's wedding week, so. But October 12th is Blueout Bash for the Panthers, so make sure you save that date. October 22nd is Scrabble with Friends with the Literacy Council, so I'll have some graphics for that on my social media pages, so make sure to just check our city calendar, check all the nonprofit calendars, there's lots of great stuff happening this fall. I miss you, guys, and I don't know if I'm seeing right, but did Councilman Newstad get a haircut?
Just about his haircut.
I still had to pick on him even from virtual, you know, it wouldn't be the same if I didn't. I miss all of y'all, I miss all of our citizens, seeing y'all face-to-face, but thank you again for letting me participate in this way and serve you. Really appreciate y'all.
Michelle, Councilman Wade also got one, too.
Aw, dang, Ray, I'm sorry.
You just can't tell.
A brand-new polish, looks real good.
Thank you. Mr. Pertle?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from you. Mr. McPhee?
Yes, I do. I've not got a haircut either, but I do want to applaud the improvements made with Development Services. Michael Shirley will testify to you that I've worked with him and monitored that for a long time and really driven him to be that change that he wanted to be with the department, so I appreciate those efforts, and Josh, the support that you gave them. I think that's really going to set us up for improvements in development, and also, if you read around, that's what people get upset about, it truly is. Dallas has had a very difficult time in the newspapers about that, and this is just one step ahead to keep us from not being a problem in the future. So proud of that work.
Absolutely. Thank you. And mine? So this is the last council meeting, you get to hear me talk about peanut butter. I will still be talking about peanut butter tomorrow, but I want to say a very sincere thank you to everyone that has donated peanut butter. Our official drive and competition ends tomorrow at noon. We are currently losing to Tyler by 700 jars, however, I know, what a surprise. However, I spent all day driving around, picking up peanut butter jars and delivering them, so I feel confident in our success. But if you have not participated yet, and thank you to these nice city employees who came and picked up hundreds to maybe thousands of peanut butter jars at my office, thank you to everyone that delivered them, thank you to everybody that has participated. It has been an overwhelmingly fun time, particularly if we win. But if you have not participated yet, you can make a monetary donation before noon tomorrow at the link, and you can also get peanut butter and drop it off at any Super One or Brookshires in Longview, so please participate. We're down by just a little bit, but I feel confident we'll pull it out in the end, and then we don't have to talk about peanut butter anymore. Next one, National Night Out is coming up on Tuesday. We have currently 91 National Night Out parties registered, which is more than last year. We're very excited about that. Thank you, guys, for getting out there and getting parties registered. Please make sure, and attend a party, and if you are hosting or attending a party, reach out to your councilperson and invite them. They want to come, they want to see you and be involved in your neighborhood, and they want to make sure you know how to contact them, so very excited about those. Please get involved, and please attend one next Tuesday night. City Council will not meet on October 10th. We are excited for our council members that will be attending the TML training, which is investing time in learning about government and getting better at our jobs, so thank you, guys, for those that are attending. And our next meeting will be October 24th, so we will see you then. We are adjourned.